Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Yvette Woodruff. I'm the Chair of the Policy Committee, and I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting. Ms. Barrett, if you could call the roll.
Mr. Young. Mr. Furman?
Present.
Dr. Giles? Pastor Jones?
Present.
Dr. Guadalupe?
She is present.
Just talking to her. Ms. Woodruff?
Present.
Dr. Hans?
Here.
Ms. Newman will not be present today. Ms. Root?
Here.
Mr. Smith is online. Mr. Cowan?
Present.
Both committees have a quorum.
Thank you. First up is public comment. Is there anyone online?
If you are online and wish to speak for public comment, please raise your hand at this time.
Is there anyone in the room for public comment? Hearing none, there will be a second opportunity for public comment before the end of the meeting. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
So moved. Support.
The agenda has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, if all are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion carries. We will now turn the meeting over to the Finance Committee. Mr. Young?
Thank you. We'll start out with item 2A, the financial update for June 2025. Ken, why don't you give a 10-second introduction to who you are and then dive in?
Sure. For those that don't know me, my name is Ken Melvin. I work with Richard at Raymond, who has been hired to be the outsourced CFO function. So our firm provides that with support from a couple of different people, including myself. As Richard is on leave, I'm serving as the interim Chief Financial Officer. I work as a principal out of our Troy office. Happy to be here to present to this group. So I'll go right into the reports. You can see them on your screen. Our revenue trend there, as you can see, is kind of up and down. The reason for that is we've had a number of rate amendments. We're on number three right now with the state of Michigan to retroactively go back and adjust various Medicaid waivers to new rates. The state did announce that Amendment 4 is on the horizon. So we'll see what that has in store for us. We don't have any details as it pertains to that. So that's kind of why the trend is in a somewhat of an up-and-down fashion related to that. As a reminder, we do have, within our funding streams, so when we talk about Medicaid, that can include a number of different waivers. So we have waivers for Children's waiver, SCD, which stands for Serious Emotional Disturbance. We have our HAB support waiver in addition to people who are disabled, aged, and blind, and temporary assistance for needy families. So even within Medicaid, we have a number of waivers. When we talk about Medicaid, we tend to lump Healthy Michigan into that assessment because we finance those very similarly. But Healthy Michigan is its own separate, that's part of the Medicaid expansion. So I just wanted to touch on some of those revenues as we look at this chart and what that's made of. We have the next slide, please. Eligibles. We continue to look at this trend. We're kind of past the pandemic unwind at this point, but continue to work with the state of Michigan on eligible issues. There's a certain Medicaid benefit called Plan First that people were inadvertently enrolled in. So we're trying to unwind some of that, basically an eligibility mismatch at the state. So that's a fairly consistent trend, and we would expect that to stay in the future. Next slide, please. Just looking at assets here, we can see that our receivables, this is probably the one to highlight on the screen, that our receivables are down. The reason being that we have a number of cost settlements open from various fiscal years, and we've recorded an allowance against those receivables, which brings the receivable balance down. So we're still working to collect those items, but accounting principles, and frankly, just being conservative about what we have there resulted in that write-down. Next slide, please. Liabilities are generally consistent. Unless there's questions, I don't necessarily cover anything particular on this slide. Next slide, please. I'm also going to skip over this one because we'll cover net position in a couple of slides. If we can go to the next one, please. Revenues. Again, revenues generally are up. We can see our Medicaid bar there on the side. A number of rate increases have, even before the fiscal year and into the current year, have generally been positive. So we're seeing higher revenues, but we also have higher expenses, as we'll see on the next slide. If we can move to that one. So expenses. We can see that our provider network expense is up. I'd like to remind the group, so these financial statements are through June 30. As a reminder, our former financing models that were service-based models were through June 30. So the fee-for-service transition occurred on July 1st, and we're looking at what that impact is going to be. We expect expense to go down, but ultimately, these are through June, and we're still under the old service model. So expenses is fairly high in this period. Can we go to the next slide, please? This shows our year-over-year comparison of total revenue and expense. What I wanted to highlight here is in the third column there, our net income slash loss. For fiscal '24 audited numbers, we were at a roughly $2 million deficit. And then through this period in this fiscal year, we have $184,000 deficit. So hopefully, seeing that trend level off. Obviously, we want to get as close to zero as possible and ultimately run a surplus in the positive column. So I think we're doing a lot of things to move in the positive direction with that. And as we move to fee-for-service, we're hoping to see that cross over into the surplus side as we continue to move forward. Next slide, please. These are our top providers. I won't necessarily cover anything here. It's more informational unless there's questions about it. Let me go to the next slide. I do have a couple of things from a narrative format. I did mention Amendment 4 is announced today. We're looking at budget. We have some coming to the board in September with our fiscal '26 budget. So we're focusing a lot on that in the Finance Department. There'll be some big changes in the budget. We'll cover that in detail in September. But the CCBHC is moving to a direct pay format, so that won't be running through the PIPs anymore, including us. So our overall budget will be down as we go into next year, but it's still looking at the total impact of that. The other thing, as I mentioned, we have fee-for-service started on July 1. Normally, in September, we would prepare July financials. The problem with, not the problem necessarily, but moving to fee-for-service without a number of months of claims data to support what we have there, in my opinion, makes the data unreliable for the July time period. So my suggestion would be to move the both July and August reporting to the October meeting. So we would capture those two months in that time. But that would also give us a little bit more data to project what we have out there for claims because we, providers have until the end of September to submit July claims. So there's going to be a lot out there that we might not have in those numbers and want to make sure they're reliable as possible. You can still come back to the group with some of our narrative items and updates should there be anything material that we expect to change on these reportings. But that's what we're looking at at this time. I also think September's going to be a budget-heavy as we look into fiscal '26. That was all that I had to cover. Happy to answer questions or?
Questions from first Finance Committee members? And then Policy Committee members. Dr. Hans?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, writing down the revenue sources.
Dr. Hans?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, especially giving a breakdown of the funding sources. For me, I would prefer that the data be presented as it comes in, good, bad, or otherwise, because that keeps us as board members on track. Yes, of course, the data is incomplete or insufficient to make any conclusions or even any projections. But I think it is good to keep us informed as things progress, especially because we are in a transition period from service model to fee-for-service. So I would appreciate if the data could be presented as it comes up. Thank you.
Comfortable with that, Ken?
I can, as long as we, I guess, acknowledge that there could be a wild swing from one period to the other.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yep, I'm happy to do that if it's...
Yeah, because I mean, it's a fundamental payment model change that as long as everybody understands that. Okay, we'll do that then.
Yeah. First of all, thank you for the news. And we did have an opportunity for a preview of this with you last week. So I think the most compelling statistic that I've seen is year-to-date, our change in net position is $184,000. Last year at this time, my recollection, it was several million dollars to the bad. So we're basically at break even. What that means to me, big picture, is some of the items that were implemented by the board and Dana and the staff are working. And that's even without fee-for-service. So unless there's something that happens, you know, unexpected, those are good trends for us financially.
Yeah, I agree. I think that we're trending in the right direction. I think that the fee-for-service is kind of the next big piece to speak to that, like you mentioned. And we'll see what happens. Like I said, we're doing a lot of work on the non-Medicaid funding. It's probably our biggest, at least my focus area to, you know, as it relates to spend down or Medicaid deductibles. Those are synonymous terms. And managing that population appropriately to make sure the highest need is getting those dollars and that kind of thing.
And I do, I agree with Dr. Hans. We should have something, with the caveat, and it's a big one, I know, but there's a lot of categories that we have here that we keep an eye on, such as our administrative expense and other things. So I think if we had, still had that data with, you know, an asterisk next to some of the revenue and expense items that are affected by fee-for-service, I think that would be something good for us still to have.
Yep, I'm happy to put that together.
Yeah. And then you might have some insight. By the time you get those numbers, if you don't, or you should have them by now or start to see some of them, you might have some insight for us on some things you're seeing or corrections that need to be made or any kind of important observation from your seat as interim CFO.
Yeah, absolutely. I can put that together. I know it's a change for our providers as well. So, you know, we appreciate their partnership of the main system changes to do that. So we're working through some technical challenge that creates some delay. So we've got all of that in the works, and I can put some bullets together as it pertains to that as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Okay, I think we've got one more question. Yep.
So is 60 days a change for the providers in terms of having to have their billing in?
I don't believe that it is. We formerly were on a encounter-based system, which is a little bit different from claims. But it was still kind of a, my understanding, it was a time-limited submission process. But this fee-for-service claim should be a, it should be easier to hold to those timelines and also reconcile and, you know, kind of what we have in the system is what it is versus the encounter-based system was subject to eligibility changes and a lot of other complexities. It should be easier from that perspective as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I just have two questions. Can you please point out in the slides which numbers you use to calculate the $184,000 net income loss?
Sure.
And then for the cash and invest being up, can you just give a simple explanation for what contributes to that?
Sure. The cash is just mostly a timing difference between when we have our payables expended and what we have in cash. We do have, I think it's roughly $25 million in investments right now. So we do have, as we increased our PA2 fund balance last year, that goes into kind of that cash reserve as well. So some of the cash differences may just be timing based on payables. We're largely going to be kind of floating around even on that, so to speak. Sure. Can we go back to the, I think it's slide five or six? Keep going. There should be a net position slide that had total revenue and expense. Keep going. I think there's two more. Sorry. I think it's the one after this. That, I'm having trouble seeing it. It should be the revenue minus the expense on this tab.
So that does not equal $184,000. And I just wanted an explanation for what else might be included in that? That's not in the two columns of revenue and expenses?
Yep. I will have to take a look at that, and I can provide you response by email, if that's okay.
Yeah, sure. And then we'll just maybe share it with the public in our next meeting. Just because this is what, you know, when people watch our meetings, this is the info we see. We have a little bit more detailed sheets in our board packets. But still, I had trouble trying to find which numbers to use to do the math.
Sure, yeah. And I think one of the things might be if we're projecting a, you know, these numbers are very aggregate. So right now, if we have a Medicaid surplus, which would be good, that settlement with the state would be reflected in our net position, but not necessarily as a reduction to revenue at this time. So that's my thought of where that's coming from. But I'll have to look in the details and provide a response.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Yep. Great question.
Any other questions? Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to contractual obligations over $100,000. The first item, Preston Associates. Jasmine White?
Hello. I'm Jasmine White, the Director of UM. So I am requesting a three-year contract for Preston Associates. They are our physician advisors that we use for medical necessity denials. So currently, we use them for all of our denials for utilization management, utilization review, and state facility approvals and denials. We also use them for all of our ABA eligibility denials. And we use them for any appeals or clinical reviews related to due process. So our contracted amount did increase from our last three-year amount. We previously had a PhD reviewer that was contracted through UM that did some of these reviews. And she has stopped working for us. Started in January of last year. So all of the reviews she did got added to the Preston sort of contract, and that's why it's increased. So she's no longer there. And so they've taken on all of that. So that is why the contract has increased. We use this contract because it is required. It's an NCQA requirement. We have to have appropriate credentialed reviewers that are physicians. And we have a very quick turnaround time for UR and UM. We often have, you know, expedited requests where we need to have decisions made very quickly. And we have to have the ability to have multiple physicians review things if there are second opinions or appeals. So it's very helpful when we have, you know, physicians, advisors, that they can have multiple doctors available to us. That is the request. Any questions?
Okay, questions first from Finance Committee. Sarah?
So do you have a number approximately of how many appeals go through? Is this contract based on just a blanket number? It looks like over...
Right now, I don't have like, I have, it's about $5,000 to $7,000 a month that we're spending on them. I don't have like a physical number of how many cases, but that's the dollar amount that's going, that we're spending.
So do they charge per case? Or is it just a blanket?
I think it's, I think it's per, I think it's per hour, per time, yeah. I'd have to look.
So I guess with that, there's a variety of hourly rates? I mean, is there like a MDDO rate? And then if you need a PhD, or what?
They don't have any PhDs. I think they only have MDs and DOs. I do not believe, I think it's the same rate for all of it, but I can double-check on that for you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then, I guess, on the ABA, is it the medical component? Because I'm assuming that's where the PhD was involved?
She did some, she did, yes, she did. She did review those.
Okay.
You can have different credentials for different reviews. So for the medical, she also did, the physicians have to do, like hospitalizations and state facility, it has to be a medical doctor.
Sure.
But for the UM service authorizations and for the ABA eligibility, they do allow PhD level. So it's just a, that's just what they allow, so.
Okay. And then are these amounts not to exceed?
Yes, correct. I don't imagine we will hit that amount that I wanted to be, I wanted to make sure we didn't go over.
Okay, all right. Other questions, either from Finance or Policy? Okay, no other questions. We need a motion to move this forward.
So moved.
Second, our support. Adam?
All right. Sheila, can you do a roll call?
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Pastor Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Guadalupe?
Yes.
And Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries?
All right, thank you. This will move on to the board meeting. Are you going to attend the board meeting? Because I think when we get everybody here, there will be probably even more clinical, technical questions than your, this committee. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
See you next week. All right. Next, we have, it looks like you're going to present this for the UHY Advisors Great Lakes, the HIPAA contract.
Good afternoon, NACERDO CIO. I am kindly requesting the approval of UHI Advisors Great Lakes Inn for the HIPAA security compliance audit for three years, not to exceed $87,800, as is specified here, divided through the three years.
Okay, questions from Finance Committee? Policy Committee? Yep, Christina?
Will you share a bit more about the RFP process? What the results were?
Sure. Actually, we have eliminated before this RFP, and it ended, we put the RFP, 19, let me go through the whole thing very quickly here. 19 companies applied, and the committee reviewed that, came up with the top four. Then they interviewed the top four, and UHY came the top in terms of financials on specific because the scope is the same for all of them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So on the scope of services, what is included in social engineering?
I can tell you exactly from here. Give me one second. That includes a lot of stuff, actually. One of them is very popular, which is phishing, okay? Someone pretend they are your boss or a coworker or a service provider asking for money. As a matter of fact, this is a very hot topic nowadays because of the AI.
Sure.
AI can generate stuff that really looks like true one.
Okay, so spam, phishing, kind of the cybersecurity. Okay, all right. Sounds good. Thank you for clarifying. Can I get a motion to move this forward to the board meeting?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion support. Sheila, can you do a roll call for us?
Dr. Guadalupe?
Yes.
Pastor Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries?
All right, very good. See you next week.
Thanks.
All right, item three, Teladoc. Adam?
Good evening. Adam Hamilton, I'm the Clinical Director here at OCHN. And the request here is to extend our contract with Teladoc for an additional six months. This is a software application that we make available to really anybody in the Oakland County community, including all of OCHN members, all of our staff. And it is a software platform that is really important for us, meeting our NCQA accreditation as well. It contains different self-management tools that have to be evidence-based in order for us to align with NCQA. We, previously, you would have recognized the name My Strength, probably. It's an application that we have had for about 10 years now. The company, My Strength, has been purchased a couple of different times during the 10 years that we've been offering that service to the public. Recently, it was in fiscal year '24, Teladoc purchased My Strength, and we extended the contract by one year. At that time, we knew we were going into NCQA external review and preparing, and we didn't want to try to change software vendors at that time. That just wrapped up last month. We're requesting to just extend that contract are evidence-based tools within the software application that a person can access and it gives you like a, kind of a tailored program for you and you can work on whatever it is, sleep, anxiety, substance use disorder, whatever it is that you're trying to improve upon, you can work on it independently using this kind of tailored-for-you platform.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Did that help?
Yeah, it helped a little bit, thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Has there been any problems with the current provider?
Well, the price went up after Teladoc obtained or, you know, purchased My Strength. So, that was sort of the prompt for us to think, okay, we should maybe go out there and start looking and see what else is available. The transition from My Strength to kind of the enhanced Teladoc platform after Teladoc purchased My Strength, that took a little longer than we had hoped and we're working through some, like getting data on the number of users and that kind of thing. So, we're still sort of working some of that out. I would have liked to see that happen more quickly. Aside from that, you know, that's really more technical stuff. I don't really fully know the reasons or, you know, if there was, if it was preventable and whatever, but I think aside from that, it's actually a very good platform. The tools within it are excellent. They need to be evidence-based really for us to align with the requirements of NCQA. We're aware of a couple of other kind of similar platforms, but I don't think they're being used by other NCQA accredited PIHPs. So, you know, we, that's going to be a key factor in deciding going forward. So, I think to that end, it's been a very good tool for us.
So, the six-month extension would actually run through February, not March?
I don't know if they, we asked for six months. I think you're probably right. This one is just sort of off-schedule because typically the contract would start on ten-one, but this seems to start on September one. I think that amount is the amount for six months, though, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Sheila, I guess I'm going to look to you or, so when does, when does the current contract end?
Nine-one.
Okay.
Or I guess eight-thirty, probably.
Eight-thirty-one.
Yeah, eight-thirty-one, yeah.
Okay. All right, so, based on your question, this is going to run, so if the RFP goes out fairly soon, should be wrapped up by the end of the calendar year?
Yeah, I'm thinking so. We're not expecting any kind of protracted timeline or anything with the RFP, so.
Okay, all right. So, new, whether they win again or new provider, it could be as soon, maybe even as March one, so that we don't, it's either March first or April first. Just trying to make the numbers line up.
The goal would be to leave some, plenty of time for like implementation, right?
So, really then the term is through the end of March. So, does the dollar amount match that, given October, November?
I think September one through March thirty-one is actually seven months.
Right.
Yeah. But the dollar amount is half of a twelve-month contract, so, the dollar amount is for six months.
Okay, so they might have a glitch come January, February, March. All right, can I get a motion to move this forward?
So moved.
Second?
Support.
Okay. I think when we come to the meeting next month, let's kind of have more definitive on, is it six months or is it, or do you need seven months just to have cushion with an overlap?
Yeah, I think it's just, I think it's six months, but I will confirm, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Sheila, can we get a roll call?
Mm-hmm. Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Pastor Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Guadalupe?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thanks, Adam.
All right, thank you.
See you next week. All right, the last contract, looks like, Mark, you're up?
Good afternoon, everyone. Mark Dugan, Director of Facilities. Seeking, we're here seeking a contract extension for LJ Rose Mechanical Contractor for the HVAC. LJ Rose provides preventative maintenance as well as upgrades and repairs to our current system. As you know, the current system is approaching forty-one years old and so we believe switching contractors at this time would not be a wise decision. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from Finance Committee? From Policy Committee? Yes. Go on.
I agree. I've been through situations like this before. You bring in somebody new, it, because the current contractor knows where all the chicken wire, Band-Aids, no, I, they're professional and I, I know they do it right, but there's always with old systems, sometimes you have problems in getting parts and you have to kind of jury-rig them in order to make everything work. So, I totally agree with keeping them on board until we make a plan and know how we're going to fund it and then carry it through and then that would be the appropriate time for
Thank you.
That kind of review.
Okay, there's no other questions? Can I get a motion to move this forward to next week?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Support.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Sheila, can you do a roll call?
Mm-hmm. Dr. Guadalupe?
Yes.
Pastor Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, that concludes the Finance portion. Back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Next up is MDC, MDHHS Performance Indicators Update by Wendy Schiller and Lindsay McCracken. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Wendy Schiller. I'm the Manager of Quality Improvement. Lindsay McCracken is joining us remotely today. She's the Quality Analyst that really reviews the data and then prepares the reports for MDHHS. So, I wanted her to be available in case there were some questions that I could not assist with, so. So, today, we're going to talk about fiscal year twenty-five, quarter two, performance indicator rates and then we'll look back at the trends for the last six months as well. So, these indicators are developed to really give the state a good aggregate view of the public mental health system and then, of course, we can also look at the local level and assign performance improvement plans and things to the providers as we need to based on the rates. We use the Performance Indicator Module that's found in Odin, that's our electronic health record, and we have the providers review all of the cases that come as out of compliance when we pull the data from this module. So, then, once they review it, they send it back to us and then we do a secondary review of all these out-of-compliance cases as well. If there's some documentation that we find in the record that would show that the case was really something in compliance, then we can manually override those as well and we do that sometimes. So, any rates that are found to be out of compliance after we do that review process, that's when we work and issue the performance improvement plans to the providers. So, before we review the rates, I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that as of the end of next month, end of fiscal year, MDHHS is discontinuing the reporting of all these indicators with the exception of the access-to-care measure that we report to them. They are implementing a new Behavioral Health Quality Program that I'll talk about a little later in the presentation. So, let's begin with Performance Indicator one. This is looking at timeliness of inpatient screening, percent of emergency referrals that are completed within a hundred minutes or less. This data is coming from the work that Common Ground in New Oakland does and as you can see, we've exceeded that measure for the last six quarters, so we haven't had to issue any performance improvement plans to them. The next indicator is two A through D. This is looking at access to care, the days from the first request to the assessment that takes place during the intake. This is the one measure that I mentioned that we will be continuing to report to the state after this fiscal year. The goal the state has set is fifty-seven percent. We have reached an overall score of fifty-four percent in the last quarter. So, we have made good improvements in the last six quarters of almost eight percent improvement. The one barrier that we have, as you can see in the two bottom graph lines, this is for individuals with developmental and intellectual disabilities. There is a lot of additional paperwork that has to be done before we can proceed with the eligibility screening for those individuals. So, our access department has worked to try to implement some new plans as far as outreach and on a more regular basis to try to obtain all that paperwork. They have also posted some information on our website to get people more information on what they need coming into the program, hoping that might help us obtain that paperwork quicker. So, the individuals, there's only about ten percent that are represented in those two bottom graph lines, so it's about ninety-six individuals in quarter two out of one thousand and thirty-six new individuals. The individuals represented in the two bottom graph lines are ninety-six individuals out of one thousand thirty-six new individuals in quarter two. So, we did issue two performance improvement plans in this last quarter. So, some of the things that we have worked with providers to do is that they are, of course, increasing outreach attempts to try to get these individuals into services sooner, also increasing the number of intake appointments slots that are available. Oftentimes, our access department reaches out to providers to try to schedule those intakes and they may find on the calendars they're looking at that they don't have enough available appointments. So, they have to increase the number of appointments and sometimes that means adding staff, of course, resources. And then they're also providing additional training on these timeframes to intake staff that may not be aware that it has to be fourteen days from when the person first calls to request services. The next graph is the days from the assessment or the intake to the first service, so that should be within fourteen days. The state's goal was eighty-three point eight percent and we have exceeded this by quite a bit for a long time and part of that is because we start their planning process in the form of a pre-plan right away. When the intake's completed, we kind of engage them to that pre-planning process, so we have been able to meet this standard. So, we haven't issued performance improvement, well, in the next slide, we did issue two performance improvement plans. One was a provider that had one new individual and they didn't meet the standard and another had three individuals that did not. So, sometimes if they're smaller providers that are not taking a lot of new people, just having one or two people late would really get them in that range that they'd have to complete the performance improvement plan. Next slide. The next measure is continuity of care, looking at follow-up after hospital discharge should be within seven days. For quarter two, we did not meet the standard for children. So, again, we had very few people that were involved in that indicator, so I think that was four individuals that did not meet the standard. Next slide. So, some of the things that they have done to really work on that, they have held staff meetings to really go over our discharge protocols and what the expectation is and also they have implemented some new reporting that they're able to pull weekly hospital discharge reports and then they can really keep track of who has discharged from a hospital and then reach out to those people to try to get them into services quicker. Next slide. This next measure is continuity of care for people in substance use treatment. Once they discharge from detox unit, they should be seen for follow-up within seven days and as you can see, we have done well in this area and exceeded that and not had to issue any performance improvement plans. Next slide. And the final indicator looks at inpatient recidivism within thirty days. So, this standard is fifteen percent or below and so we have consistently met this standard as well. Next slide. So, we didn't have any PITS issued in quarter two, but there were some recent activities in previous quarters that we put into place and some of that was working with clinical staff to really educate, encourage people about the importance of taking their medications as prescribed to avoid rehospitalization and also give people a lot of resources for when they leave the hospital of additional resources that they can tap into. Okay, next slide. Now, I'd like to review the new MDHHS Behavioral Health Quality Program. They started working on this program back in October of 2023 and they really wanted to try to implement some of the national measures and have their measures align with those. And those are HEATIS measures that we've talked about before and some of the CMS measures. So, they're doing this in a three-year rollout plan. The first year, they're going by calendar years, so that's a little different than our performance indicators have been, but in December of this year, they're going to measure us on thirteen new measures. That'll be year one and then year two, they added four additional HEATIS measures to that. And year three, in 2027, they're going to focus more on CAPS measures, which is more member experience. Next slide, please. So, this is a list of the year one program measures. They are not going to set a baseline until 2028, so they want to get through this full three-year rollout. They have provided some benchmarks that are just based on state averages, some national numbers that we could use as a guide, but they are not setting a baseline. So, they are really going to consider the first three years as informational only when rating the PIHPs. So, what I've added here, just to get an idea, I looked at the rates from last December to see where we're at and I think eight of the thirteen, we have met or exceeded the measure so far. So, we're working on improving those. Of course, we work with the Integrated Health Team here at OCHN to work on those HEATIS measures. So, the state is pulling all of this data out of Care Connect 360. That's their own system where they have all of the behavioral health claims from the PIHPs as well as the Medicaid Health Plan Physical Healthcare Claims. So, they have that all combined in this system. Next slide. These are the four additional measures they will add next year in year two. Next slide. In year three, as I mentioned, they're going to focus more on the member satisfaction measures, so that will involve sending out a survey. So, the state hasn't decided yet whether they are going So this is a list of the year one program measures. They are not going to set a baseline until 2028. So they want to get through this full three-year rollout. They have provided some benchmarks that are just based on state averages, some national numbers that we could use as a guide, but they are not setting a baseline. So they are really going to consider the first three years as informational only when rating the PIHPs. So what I've added here, just to get an idea, I looked at the rates from last December to see where we're at, and I think eight of the 13 we have met or exceeded the measure so far. So we're working on improving those. Of course, we work with the integrated health team here at OCHN to work on those HEATIS measures. So the state is pulling all of this data out of Care Connect 360. That's their own system where they have all of the behavioral health claims from the PIHPs, as well as the Medicaid health plan, physical health care claims. So they have that all combined in this system. Next slide. These are the four additional measures they will add next year in year two. Next slide. And year three, as I mentioned, they're going to focus more on the member satisfaction measures, so that will involve sending out a survey. So the state hasn't decided yet whether they are going to be the ones to send the survey or if they will ask the PIHPs to do that. And they also have not decided which survey they're going to utilize. So we do the echo survey, which we've discussed here before, and that is a CAP survey, so that may be one that they decide to select. So starting in September, I think we're going to shift some of our focus of our performance improvement activities from the current performance indicators to all of these future measures and really dig deep into that data and start coming up with our new interventions and working towards improving those. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions on the Policy Committee first?
Oh, go ahead, Policy Committee. Did you? No? Okay, thank you very much. You know, I've looked at these with great interest, and especially in the recidivism rates and follow-up. And I don't know how to ask this question, but how do you keep up with the people that don't show back up? Okay? If I can ask that question, and I've got an add-on to that in relation to the full outcome. You know, I was in a meeting here the other day, and we were talking about persons who miss out or do not come back or what have you, and how do we keep up or how do we track them in relation to the response, or if they're calling at a different hour of the day and getting the services that they needed. And so when I looked at these numbers, I was impressed with the numbers, okay? But then I said, who are we missing? Who are we missing? And is that truly reflected in our number?
Mm-hmm. So for recidivism, in our protocols, we have specific steps and criteria of what is expected. So if somebody doesn't show up to treatment, and you know, it's more of a clinical issue, so I maybe am not as familiar with that, but there are a certain number of attempts at outreach and engagement that must occur before you start the process of, you know, discharging someone out of services. So there are numerous attempts that are expected of the clinical team if somebody does not follow up with their service or have a scheduled appointment and don't show up.
Yeah, okay, because I know that's a big issue.
Yes.
Okay? And so, I don't even know if it's solvable, but I do know it's a big issue. Thank you very much.
Dr. Hahn?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. So on your measurement on outcome and evaluations, this is kind of worrisome, 96 out of 1,036 people on the IDD spectrum, I understand. I think we are not reaching them, and there are some significant barriers. And as you can understand, that population significantly is impacted by it. So I think that is something that we need to look at our end. So that is my one big take from that. The second question I have is that the changes that are coming, some of the things, like, you know, it's a three-year rollout. For example, one small example is psychotropics for children. A recent couple of studies that I have come across is that there are long-term impacts of psychotropics when given at a very early age, especially outcomes with mobility issues and later in life, and that will be another additional burden on the system. And I know that 20, 30 years go very quickly, and some of these side effects manifest at much younger age. For example, mobility issues or cognitive impairment, age-related, happens to sometimes come very early for this population. So I think that those, even though state has finally decided to improve some of the monitors or what we are exactly looking at. But as we know, that whatever data we collect, and by the time it's implemented, we have already crossed five years, and that is a significant time, especially for older children and adolescents. So I think we need to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody? Dr. Guadalupe?
Yeah. For the continuity of care, is that individuals that actually made their appointment or an appointment was made for them within that certain amount of time?
Is that following a hospitalization?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yes, they should all have an appointment. When they're discharged from the hospital, they are given an after-care appointment. So we do, there are exceptions allowed to that measure, so the state will let us remove people that didn't show for appointments and certain exceptions where they don't for other indicators for that one, they do allow that. So in some cases, it may be that the appointment wasn't made appropriately, or maybe they chose to use a different provider, you know, so there might be different circumstances for...
So is that data looking more at ensuring compliance that the hospital gave the appointment or that the individual actually attended the appointment?
It's more that the individual actually attended the appointment.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question. I think I already know the answer to this, but is some of the challenge we face just in terms of, you know, staffing and keeping staff?
Yes.
I see all the heads nodding in the back row there. So, yeah, thank you for confirming that.
Yeah, in the performance improvement plans, that's usually what we see. They're going to increase staff, train staff, you know, they have a lot of turnover, so that's frequently an issue.
So is there anything that can, I mean, is it finding people or is it flexibility or is it the whole, what we deal with at the university, which is everybody wants to be remote five days a week or what? Is there a kind of a macro issue or is it several micro issues?
I think it's finding people. Sometimes they will end up cross-training too, so maybe making better use of resources that they have. So that's often an issue too. Like, maybe they can get creative, but I think in general, they have a hard time finding people with the proper credentials to fill a lot of those positions.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cal.
Couple of things that struck me here, and I want to, just big picture first. So the state has put this into effect for the next three years.
Yes.
And they've taken out a lot of the guts of the reporting over the next three years. I don't expect you to answer this, but it's kind of coincidental maybe to me that they're trying to change the delivery of services, and that means for at least the next two years, there won't be any data to judge how potentially new providers will be conducting the business and enforcing the rules. Because a lot of what you're reporting isn't OCHN doing this, but it's the providers that are supposed to do these follow-ups. We monitor all this, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So it's just, I just have a question of why this is occurring now. Did they say why they're changing the system? Do we have any...
They didn't really. I mean, they just, like I said, they're saying they want to align it more with the federal regulations and make it more consistent nationwide.
Well, if we haven't been aligned with the federal regulations, then that's the state's fault if they're... I mean, I just find this extremely interesting, that the timing of rolling out this, because I want to know, I'll tell you some very interesting statistics that just struck me. First of all, was the one about getting the screening done within three hours. And I know some of these are very challenging situations, but these are when people are the most in need. When they pick up that phone and call, they need you now, not tomorrow, not a week from now. And then the other, and we're very high on that, I mean, as system-wide, it's in the high 90s or 100% over the last six quarters in getting that screening completed in a timely manner. And the other one that struck me was the getting people their first service within 14 days of the assessment. So the assessment comes in, gets through the process, and people are getting help. Those, to me, are the two most telling things. And again, with a couple of exceptions in the child category, and in my mind, I'm thinking, is that because we're not getting a response from other people who are responsible for the children, that they get the service with, get to where the service is being done in 14 days? But that's another point. Among adults, we are consistently in the high 90s, and in some instances, 100%. So to me, upfront, when people are in crisis and they need help, we're getting them in and getting them processed and getting the information. We need to do the evaluation. Then the evaluation's being done in a timely manner, and we're getting them their first service in a timely manner. So I know some of the things I noticed on where there's lower scores are in what I would call follow-up issues. And follow-up, I know, especially in substance abuse and some others is very important. But if you're doing it right on the front end, hopefully, we're going to catch up on the back-end issues. So it's just that I'm very surprised that this would come out, because at least on these issues that are reported now, and I guess that's a question I have for you, and if you don't know, please get back to us by the board meeting. Are they still making these requirements? Do we still have? Is the goal still 14 days to get people and families to their first service from the date of assessment? So my point is, are these rules still going to be in effect and they're not being reported? Or they're going to throw the rules out too? Do we know that?
Well, I know that indicator two A, from their first request to the assessment, that is still in place because we still are reporting that. That's the only one we are still reporting. Indicator one, which is that three-hour measure, they will expect us to include that information in our network adequacy reporting, but only on an annual basis. So that is also still in place.
Okay.
So they may show up in other areas and other ways.
Right. Well, I just want to make sure that, you know, I'll have this question for Dana next week, but I want to make sure we're not lowering our standards, that we're trying to meet these standards, even if the state doesn't want us to report on it or whoever's going to be doing this oversight in the future with the potential change. Because we need, first of all, we're about service, and I think these are all important things to know. I'm a little bit stunned that some of these things are not going to be reported for the next two years. Because how is the state going to evaluate how the changes that they're proposing are working? Because, you know, someone wiser than me once said, what gets measured gets done. So if you're not measuring it and you're not reporting it, I mean, hope is not a strategy in terms of, we hope people are doing this. They need to be doing it. So I think that's something that, you know, we'll have to deal with at a board level to make sure that our service standards that we have are still being enforced despite the fact that the state doesn't seem to want to be bothered with the information, at least a lot of it for the next two years, so.
Well, some of the HEATIS measures are very similar to these other measures, like the follow-up after hospitalization is there. It's just the specifications may be very specific, like it might only include people with certain diagnoses or, you know, the specs are very prescribed as they aren't here. So the rates may look a little different. So a lot of those do transfer over to the new measures in some way.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any additional question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheila, this is just a receiving file, correct? Next, we have zero suicide, Adam and Amanda. Whose hand did you say was up? They're trying to determine if Dana's asking a question. Okay.
I'm sorry, I was just going to make a comment. This is Dana, about the metrics and the performance measures. And I do want to say that we are going to continue to look at those standards and utilize those standards, because not only are they critical to the state, but it's really critical to our community, so we can talk about how we're responding to the needs of the community. But also, as we work with health plans and other entities, we want to make sure that we're maintaining a certain standard of care for individuals that we serve. And if we don't report it and it doesn't get measured, how do you know where you need to make improvements? So those are really critical measures that I think we've all built our systems and become accustomed to meeting. And so my stance is that we will continue to measure those things, even if the state no longer requires that.
Thank you. Because you really don't want to look at something annually, you want to look at it quarterly. All right, Adam and Amanda.
Good evening again. Adam Hamilton, Clinical Director here at OCHN. This is Amanda Palmer. She's a Utilization Management Analyst on our UM team. And we work together on our zero suicide efforts here at OCHN. So I'm going to just talk to you a little bit about what the zero suicide philosophy is and how it is implemented here at OCHN, and then Amanda and I'll get into a little bit more detail around, you know, specifics of what that looks like. The zero suicide philosophy is essentially a philosophy that says all suicide deaths are preventable. So when that's implemented within an organization like OCHN, what you're really striving to do is get like top-down embrace of that philosophy. And so an organization that's really embraced zero suicide, has tried to implement it fully, you're going to see lots of involvement from lots of different parts of that organization. And we're going to talk a little bit about what that looks like in terms of OCHN's specific implementation and how we've also worked with our provider network to see system-wide implementation of zero suicide as well. Go ahead in advance, please. This slide here shows the zero suicide framework. And really, this framework is how we've structured our annual work plan for zero suicide, and we look at in that work plan each aspect of this framework and build goals and objectives around it, around each of them. And the idea is that we're really covering all of the bases that we would need to really have system-wide implementation of zero suicide. So what does that look like specifically? Well, at a high level, we've got our zero suicide work plan, which is based on that framework. You'll see zero suicide manifest in different policies. We have clinical protocols that speak to best practices for supporting someone who's at risk for suicide, so that's our clinical pathway for suicide care. Many, many different teams within OCHN have zero suicide team-specific procedures, so we'll talk about like a good example of one of those. And these activities are really all guided by our OCHN Zero Suicide Steering Committee. Again, that steering committee is comprised of staff from across the organization, many, many different teams here, not just clinical staff, I would add. And each quarter, we look at our work plan, and we identify the goals and objectives we're going to focus on during that quarter. And then there are different work groups. A lot of times, the work groups consist of members of the Zero Suicide Steering Committee. Other times, we've collaborated with the provider network and pulled in staff from providers to... providers to, to, to work with us on a goal. Um, and, and other times, the, the, uh, focus of a work group will require us to go out and kind of solicit part, uh, participation from different people within the organization who might not be participating in, in Zero Suicide at all, but we kinda need their input or we want them to, you know, help and, and get some buy-in, uh, on what we're trying to achieve with Zero Suicide. Um, and then lastly, we have our Zero Suicide Collaborative, and this is where we partner with, um, community partners and the, and many different providers within our network as well. And we work on different Zero Suicide activities, uh, system-wide with that collaborative.
You can go to the next slide. So, how that looks here at OCHN is a few different ways. The first thing is, we've implemented, uh, Suicide Prevention 101 training for all staff, so that's any staff who's hired onto OCHN has to complete that training on an annual basis. Um, we also have, for all clinical staff, they have to do an additional two hours of a clinically-oriented suicide training in addition to that 101. So, they're really getting at least three hours minimally of suicide training on an annual basis. Um, an example, too, is, um, our access team. So, all of the individuals who come through access for screening are being screened for suicide risk. And so, when they're being screened for suicide risk, um, if they are identified as having risk, they're completing a full, um, safety with CSSRS, that's the Columbia Scale. And so, those individuals who are being identified as being high-risk or moderate-risk for suicide are being referred for what we call the clinical pathway for suicide care, when they're being referred for an intake. So, um, those individuals are, um, being considered for some additional supports and services right at the onset, when they're being connected with a provider. When somebody is coming through our access department, too, we have a team-specific procedure, and we have this across many different teams at OCHN, but access is a good example of what we do. So, if somebody identifies as being high-risk for suicide over the phone, maybe they're at risk for their immediate safety while they're talking with that access screener. Um, we have some steps in our procedure that talk about how they can go about assisting that person. So, a lot of our Zero Suicide, um, policies here follow the steps of SAFE Talk. Um, so, SAFE Talk, if you're not familiar, is suicide alertness for everyone, the half-day training that's available for anybody. Um, and it's the talk steps, which is tell, ask, listen, and keep safe. So, um, when somebody is on the phone with an access screener and they're identifying, um, thoughts of suicide, the procedure really talks about going through those steps with the person, making sure that they are in fact safe, and, um, establishing like that plan to connect them with a provider. If for whatever reason, there's an immediate concern for their safety, they're not able to stay safe in that moment, there's some steps and guidance in there that talks about calling 988 together, doing that warm handoff, or, um, calling for a welfare check if that's necessary at the time. Um, and then also, we do offer annual, um, well, really quarterly, suicide trainings throughout for our network, for the general community, so anybody can attend, like, quarterly SAFE Talk trainings, quarterly assist trainings. Um, and we have an upcoming event that I'll talk about more that is also open to the community. Can you go to the next slide? Thank you. So, our clinical pathway for suicide care, um, I started to mention a little bit, so this is our short-term care, um, for those individuals who are high-risk, moderate-risk for suicide. And so, um, with this, they're getting increased therapy supports. It really is gonna be about once a week for therapy for them. Engagement of their natural support, so they're gonna identify somebody within their support system, that they're gonna sign a release for, who can engage with that therapist, too. If the person's unable to be reached, the therapist can then reach out to that support person to help engage them. Um, there's also some guidance in there if the individual misses their appointment. So, like, like was discussed earlier, if somebody no-shows what happened, this gives them really clear guidance. If somebody is on the clinical pathway for care, um, they're going to be, uh, called within an hour of that missed appointment, then called again three more times. If they cannot be contacted, the natural support is reached, if there's concern for their immediate safety, a welfare check is completed. Um, there's just a lot of guidance there, if somebody misses their appointment, on what those steps are expected, um, for that clinician. And then lastly, um, it talks about lethal means reduction. So, when somebody is being connected with the clinical pathway, there's a discussion about lethal means, and if that person has access to any lethal means, how that can be removed to maintain their safety during that time, where they're at an increased risk for suicide. Go to the next slide, please. So, some of the ways that we've been looking at improving our practices here at OCHN is really working on a work plan every year. Like Adam mentioned, we follow that framework pretty closely. So, we're always looking at the different areas of that framework and how we can improve it for both our network and ourselves. And so, um, we do an annual workforce survey as part of that, to get feedback from our staff on how we can improve this, the knowledge of our Zero Suicide practices and policies here within our organization. And so, we, um, set that out every September, um, during Suicide Prevention Month, so we have that coming up next month. And then lastly, we look at our, our suicide data for any trends and patterns, and we really use that data to kind of steer our work plan for the year and help give us some guidance. Go to the next slide. So, an example, um, from this fiscal year, what we did was, in quarter one, we worked closely with our communications team to really increase the visibility of Zero Suicide on our website. So, that was something that really wasn't, um, visible, a lot of it was just stuff we had talked about internally with our policies. So, now, we have a section on our website that includes some details about what Zero Suicide is, in addition to the crisis resources that were already available. You can go to the next slide. Another thing we've been working on this year is getting together a September event. So, like I mentioned, September is Suicide Prevention Month. And so, we've worked really closely with the Health Division to collaborate. They do an annual community conversations here at our building, where they talk about a different topic related to suicide prevention every year. And so, we partnered with them this year for their September event. So, they're going to be doing their community conversations in the morning, talking about, um, means reduction and mental health and, and the law, and how that impacts suicide risks. So, they're gonna be focusing on, um, it's called ERPO laws, Extreme Risk Protection Order laws. Um, so, they're gonna be talking about that. Other legislation that is coming down that may impact individuals' mental health and suicide risk. And then, um, we partnered with our training department here internally to, um, create an afternoon training component, so that we're not taking away from that conversation in the morning, but really adding a training element to it. So, we're gonna be offering a self-care and secondary trauma training for clinicians at afternoon. So, if you come in the morning, um, you can sit through that community conversation. They have a lot of really great speakers planned. Um, and then they're gonna be providing lunch, and then we're gonna roll into that training in the afternoon for clinicians. It's a great opportunity for individuals to get CE's. I think in total, we're gonna have five and a half CE's available between the two events. Um, which is really exciting.
I believe the next slide is just questions. Um, and I would just add to, uh, what Amanda mentioned about increasing visibility, you know, another thing that we're, we're doing to, to increase visibility is, you know, bringing this conversation here, presenting it at our general staff meetings, and again, really just trying to support, uh, the, the agency-wide, organization-wide embrace of the Zero Suicide philosophy. So, we're appreciative of the opportunity to be here with everyone and talk about this tonight.
Any question? Dr. Hahn.
So, um, are we in, uh, are we connected with the National Hotline, the 988, or how does that work? Because most people are familiar with 988, families or, and individuals as well. So, is that something that we are involved with, or how does actually, um, visibility, of course, is good, but anybody or somebody contemplating suicide may not be, may not have even heard about OCHN, but most people, or at least people around them, know about 988. So, how does, uh, are we connected with that? I think that would be a good channel to be able to reach the people that need that support.
So, on our, on our Zero Suicide Collaborative group, we actually have a representative from Common Ground, from their crisis helpline, who comes and attends our quarterly meetings. Um, so she's able to provide feedback from that perspective. Common Ground does do our, um, 988 helpline for the area, so any calls made within this area to 988 filter through their call center.
Any other questions? I did have a question. Um, in terms of the callback, uh, for the missed appointments, does that have to be clinical staff, or is clerical used for that?
I don't think we have that specified in the, in the protocol itself.
Yeah.
But, um, you know, I think the expectation would be that whoever that appointment was with would be the one calling. So, 'cause that first phone call's within the hour of that missed appointment, so I believe the expectation would be that that's the person making that call.
Okay. 'Cause, uh, I think you said, like, three calls that same day?
So, it's one call within the hour, another call that same day, and then it's three consecutive days of calls.
Okay.
And if there's immediate concern, it's reaching out to that natural support who's been identified.
Right.
Also, if there's an immediate concern, doing that welfare check for their safety.
Okay. So, during that process, you're probably updating safety plans and doing a treatment plan review for the increased frequency and all of that?
Yep. That's the expectation when somebody aligns with that, is that they're updating the crisis plan, updating the IPOS to reflect their needs.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You know, the last time, uh, we talked, and I was talking about some of the numbers, I think you remember, Adam. Have you guys got a, um, a number now, maybe on, not only the area, areas that, uh, suicides occur, the young people are, maybe the causals, they may not know the causals, okay? But, a number said, okay, this group now, this group, and this, maybe we segmented that. That's, that's number one. In relation to it, um, none of us know how many, well, statistics say a person tried once or try again and try again. But, the question has to be, um, what area, if there is a focus area, okay? Uh, most recently in the news, there were two ladies that just killed themselves. They had a contract with one another, they're gonna do it. Um, a fourteen-year-old kid, you know, did this. Sometimes you say, maybe it's the environment, what have you, some things, maybe they've been bullied or what have you. But, is there something we can look at that says, okay, in these segments, um, we have a higher rate of suicide, that then we can sort of start addressing people in those areas, that rated area, to help get to that ZGO base? I don't know if we'll get to it, but let's hope for that. But then we could get to that, and I don't know, through the testing that you have, or what have you, um, if, if there are specific areas. I, I think that things that's going on today, we may see an increase, but just trying to segment the areas, segment.
So, I'll let Adam speak to specific numbers. Um, but in terms of, like, specific areas that we've looked at, last fiscal year, we looked at the ADD population. That's when that frequently, um, is overlooked when it comes to suicide risk. And so, we really worked to create an appendix to give some more guidance to our provider staff, so when they're working with those individuals who are presenting with suicide risk, kind of what that may look like and how it may look differently in that population. We noticed, um, you know, with our SED network, that, um, the pathway's been underutilized. And so, we've drafted an appendix for that population this fiscal year, so that's going through the final processes of being approved right now, so it'll be ready and available to our providers come 10-1. And so, that gives some more guidance, again, for like those differences with that population specifically, um, when it comes to suicide risk and also suicide care. And so, we're, um, looking every fiscal year at different areas that maybe could benefit from that appendix. I don't know that we can get an appendix for every single population that exists and everything that's out there, but really trying to touch on the main areas where we're seeing gaps in our services and where we can improve that.
So, I, I think statistically, we know that the population of adults with mental illness tend to be at the highest risk. We see, um, you know, system-wide, I would say overall, our, our deaths by suicides, it's a fairly low number. So, I think in fiscal year twenty-four, OCHN was aware of something like sixteen different suicides. Because we have branched out into, uh, new places in the community with our co-response program with the police and things, you know, we're, we're becoming aware of, of more suicides. I, uh, I think only about, I think only fourteen of those individuals had been involved with the public mental health system in Oakland County out of the sixteen. Uh, this year, the numbers are down. Now, granted, we're not through the fiscal year entirely yet, though we are getting close. I think we have seven individuals this fiscal year, um, who have been involved in public mental health services in Oakland County who died by suicide, and we're aware of ten suicide deaths. So, you know, consistently, we do see in that data, it's adults with mental illness who, who are mostly represented. So, that's, that's important to know. We have evidence-based practices within the adult system in Oakland County that, uh, support individuals who are at, at risk for suicide. Um, the one that is most familiar to people is called dialectical behavior therapy. And then, of course, that is the, the, where we, we see the most utilization of the clinical pathway for suicide care that Amanda was speaking about, uh, among that population as well. So, we think we're, we're connecting with and targeting the right providers in terms of where is the risk greatest. But still, we, we strive to, as, as Amanda mentioned, you know, we strive to make good clinical guidance available to all populations receiving services.
Sheila, uh, do we need to vote on the work plan, or is this a receiving file? Thank you. Next, we have Angie O'Dow.
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone.
The recipient writes, um, recommendation.
Good afternoon. This is Angie. Um, and yes, I am here to present the recommendation from the REC committee to reappoint Hunter Parker to his second term.
Angie, we're having trouble hearing you.
Oh, no. All right. I got a new computer. Can you hear me now?
A little bit.
I could switch to my, all right, I'll try to shout. All right. I'm here to present the recommendation from the REC committee to reappoint Hunter Parker for his second term to the REC committee. Um, he has expressed interest, and, um, and he, um, he provides, um, great, he's in great standing, and he shares his ideas and experiences with the REC members.
Uh, Policy Committee members, you've seen the board's recommendation from the REC committee to us, and you've had the opportunity to review, uh, his reappointment. Uh, is there a recommendation or motion?
Almost.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Uh, Sheila, if we can have a vote. Dr. Hahn?
Yes.
Ms. Root?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Widruff?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, Angie.
Thank you.
And now, we're down to other business than...
Good evening, everyone. I will try to be brief, um, but we do have a plethora of activities going on. As you know, summer is a very busy time for us. We have well over twenty events just this month, between events and conferences and trainings that I will highlight for you. Um, and I, I also wanna do a little shout-out to all the colleagues and team members. Um, and I, I also want to do a little shout-out to all the colleagues and team here at OCHN. We would not be able to have OCHN present at these events without our team members stepping up and stacking tables and, and being there for us. So, we're really grateful for all of their help to make sure that OCHN has a presence at these events. Um, just wanted to highlight an event we sponsor every year, the Everybody vs. Stigma Event, um, that took place last week. Um, and then, as you can see, there are a number of different community-type events that are at community churches or community centers. Um, we were at the Oakland County's Health and Housing Fest, which I believe is the second annual event. Um, I really want to highlight the Your Voice, Share Value Event. You'll see some photos of that, um, at the end of the presentation. Um, and thank Mr. Cowan for being there for us. Um, it was a wonderful event. It was an opportunity to highlight our OCHN work groups and have individuals from those work groups actually come up and highlight it in some very unique and fun ways. Um, it was just a very feel-good event and an opportunity to honor individuals who received those peer and achievement recognitions, um, and that was held last week here in, in the building. Also, just some other events that were highlighted there as well, um, the walk and talk with doctors as well as a training. Um, next slide, please. And then, you can see a few other events, like I said, community churches, community, um, high, and the high schools, um, as well as, um, some conferences. Dana and Trish are at the CIT conference this week, um, and as well as the National Night Out that is coming up tomorrow. And then, some other trainings that are coming up. Next slide, please. Um, this is highlighting some additional trainings, um, as well as the Senior Market Day. We actually are participating with, uh, the Health Division. They are hosting market days throughout Oakland County and Oak Park and Waterford and other locations. Um, so, we are hosting events, uh, to be present at those, those programs so that people can, uh, know about our services. Also, wanted to mention, um, the E-Community Services Family Appreciation Day that's coming up this weekend. That is a, a really well-attended event in Pontiac. We are actually a sponsor of that event. We deeply support the services that they provide for the people in that community, um, and we will be present at that event on Sunday. Also, wanted to highlight the, the Town Hall meeting that's coming up next, next Monday. You all should have received in your inboxes in Boardable an invite to, we welcome you to attend. Um, this is an opportunity, it's an advocacy opportunity that we are bringing a number of individuals to come and, um, be on the panel to talk. We have some, uh, Ken Fisher from NAMI, we have, um, Alan Multer from the, from CMHA, as well as commissioners and some of our providers, individuals served are gonna be speaking. It's an opportunity for people to advocate and speak up, um, about keeping the public behavioral system local, keeping those, those services local. Um, as you'll see on your invite, it's next Monday on, um, the eighteenth from, at four thirty, from four thirty to six. It'll be hosted here. We also are gonna have a virtual component, so it's a hybrid opportunity because we want to make sure that individuals have access and are able to let their voices be heard. That's the point of the event. Um, just wanted to highlight a couple other things, some trainings and another, uh, community events. Next slide, please. And the list continues. Um, just, uh, also wanted to highlight some things that we have coming up. September also shapes up to be a very busy month, as you can see, a number of trainings. But, in addition to that, we have the state recovery celebration that we participate in, as well as our Mokka Mile Rally, which is in Lansing. Um, we have our own recovery celebration here on the nineteenth. Um, so, the parking lot will be a bustling bit of activity with, um, speakers and music and food and just a celebration for those individuals in recovery. I also didn't note on here, but I will for sure next month, that we also have the NAMI Walk that we participate in on, that's on the twentieth, on September the twentieth. And then, we have the CNS Ball Fest coming up as well. Next slide, please. Just some highlights about some of the press releases. Um, you'll be, um, seeing that, that OCHN did receive our full accreditation for NCQA accreditation, so we're excited about that. And the press release will be coming out, as well as we are welcoming once again, um, an APH, uh, I'm sorry, APAF fellow. Um, so, we're really excited to welcome Dr. David as our fellow for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six year. And then, also, we'll do a recap of our Town Hall. We are gonna be, um, requesting, doing a request for media to attend, so we're hoping to have some media presence for that event as well, but we'll also do a follow-up to, um, discuss it. And then, just our usual, um, ongoing advertising as well as conference use to put use to this great space for the community to be able to use. And then, the next slide is some highlights from the Your Voice, Share Value Event. Um, as you can see, um, was really grateful to have an individual who's an individual served, as well as one of our peer trainers, Amit. He was our host for the day and he did a fabulous job from I Understand. And then, as you can see, Mr. Cowan was also able to be a spokesperson. And then, we have, um, a couple of people that were, Linda, our, um, customer service manager and our CAC chairperson, who was able to highlight our CAC committee. And then, some of our award winners are noted there as well. And that's all I have.
Any questions?
Suzanne, I, I want to thank you for, uh, cajoling me to be there at the Voices event. Um, I also want to acknowledge that, um, Dr. Guadalupe and Mr. Young were also there. And also, I know this year, we've had a number of board members at different events and, and I think that's a good thing. But, I do want to say, I was so impressed. Um, there was so much going on because we had a whole variety of speakers who are people we serve and who also are volunteers in many instances. Um, and also, uh, there was some interactive things going on. Some of the work groups decided to do, like, there was one quiz show thing going on. It was, it was pretty amazing. Plus, there was videos going up. We had a great host, uh, was it Amit, who, who was really great. And, uh, there was just a lot of positive things going on. I think the most compelling thing was to hear almost every person talk about how the service, the providers and OCHN had changed their lives. And, uh, so, that was amazing to, to hear, um, and it was truly inspirational. So, mark me down for next year. Okay? Thank you very much.
You got it. Thank you. Thank you to the other board members who attended. It was very sad to miss it, but I'm so grateful that it was such a great event for everyone. Thank you.
Okay. Um, CEO evaluation. Mr. Cowan.
All right. So, uh, last, the date of the last board meeting in, uh, July, uh, before the board meeting, the CEO Evaluation Committee, five-member committee met and, uh, walked through the information, uh, provided, um, from the surveys that had been completed, uh, for the evaluation by each of the eleven board members. And as a result, at that meeting, a unanimous recommendation was made for the CEO's compensation at a level of a three percent, uh, salary increase and a six percent, uh, merit payment. Uh, the information was then communicated, all the, that, to the board members in a subsequent, uh, memo with me with the, uh, information concerning the evaluations. And for those of you not familiar, we have a, a scoring system that's used, that's part of, uh, the CEO's contract. This is a contractual obligation that we mean, it's just not something we draw up from whole cloth. And that, um, uh, information was put forward. And I, we did indicate that we would actually vote on this today because we try to stick to making this decision prior to the anniversary date, which I believe is August thirteenth. Yep. So, uh, after five years, I've got that date memorized. Um, so, this is a very comprehensive process. Um, we look at ten different categories of administration, uh, finances, work with the community, work with the staff here. Um, it's as comprehensive as I've ever seen, uh, in my time on various boards and committees. So, I want to thank all the board members for completing the survey, also making comments, which were also passed on to Dana. Um, and what, what we came to mathematically fit into, um, with the increases, uh, those were, uh, included in a chart that are both, that is also included in the contract. So, that all being said, tonight, that recommendation is put before the board, uh, for its consideration, um, on the compensation review of the CEO. I'll welcome it.
Support.
Any discussion? I also forgot to thank Nicole Williams for all of her work with respect to the, uh, to the, uh, entire effort. It, it was her first time doing it and she did an excellent job. Oh, she's on? Well, good. All right. If there's no, no comments, and I know everybody's had an opportunity to review this, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mm-hmm. Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Pastor Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Guadalupe?
Yes.
Ms. Widra?
Yes.
Dr. Hans?
Yes.
Ms. Root?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. The motion carries, uh, and the work of the twenty twenty-five CEO Evaluation Committee is finally at an end. So, I want to thank all my committee members for their efforts, several meetings and reviews. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, now, we're at the next opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone online?
If you are online and wish to speak for public comment, please raise your hand at this time.
Seeing no hands, um, anyone in the room wishing to make public comment? Public comment is now closed and will move to board member comments, starting with Mr. Furman.
Yes. Um, I'd just like to mention that, um, this meeting was particularly, um, insightful tonight, um, with the discussion of the, uh, not, not only the change to the fee for service contracts, but also, um, looking at, um, different metrics that the, um, state is, is going to be, um, implementing in the next few years and also the, uh, zero suicide, um, presentation, all very enlightening. And thank you very much for, uh, all the time that the staff, um, allotted to put together the presentations and the agenda. Have a good night.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Guadalupe?
Yeah. I just wanted to, uh, give a shout-out to those that did, um, put together the Your Voice Conference, uh, this past week. It was just really great to hear about all the different work groups and I learned a lot, um, by being there. So, thank you for everyone who, uh, took part in that and those that, um, received awards. Thank you.
Ms. Root?
I just have two comments I'd like on record tonight. Um, as far as the CEO evaluation, I wish that we would bring back the community component to, um, the evaluation and not just have the board members complete that yearly. In the past, we used to have OCHN staff, providers, and I think the public, um, participate in the CEO evaluation. And then, I also, I apologize to if I didn't recognize this sooner that we were voting on it tonight, but I feel like it's more appropriate if we would have taken that vote in our regular Tuesday meeting. Understand the timeline of wanting to, um, vote ahead of the anniversary date, but I still think that we have more, more people attend our general board meetings. That's all I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Exactly my thoughts. Um, the public, um, input into the CEO import and evaluation is critical and we have historically done that over many, many years in the past. So, I would, uh, hope that it is reinstituted in this process. And similarly, the, although there have been quite a turnover in, in key positions in our organization's leadership, but that, their input, the, the staff that works so diligently and with, most of the times without any recognition, uh, by the board, uh, should have a say in, um, the CEO evaluation. Thank you.
Pastor Jones?
Uh, let me, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. Um, first, I, I really want to, uh, recognize everyone for the presentations that they've done, the extra work, their extra evaluations that they've done, the time that you spent, um, pulling together all of this information to help us today. It's what you do that helps our organization do what it does. And I'll go back to what our chair is always saying, we are a service organization and what you do, uh, far exceeds expectation. I've said this before, but thank you so much for the presentations and, and giving us the opportunity to push back at you and challenge you. So, thank you so very, very much. Secondly, uh, uh, you know, month after month, quarter after quarter, year after year, uh, the extra effort that Suzanne does in relation to getting, uh, information out about this organization, meeting with community organizations, all of the things that she does, I, you know, personally, thank you very much. And I'm sure that all of us want to thank her for the extra effort that she does because most of us know when you're putting something together or trying to keep the public advised, it's not an easy task. So, say, I want to say thank you. And then, finally, on, on the CEO's evaluation, uh, public, private, or whatever, uh, I said it before, you know, when you mess up, uh, we talk about you. Uh, that, that's the thing. Uh, when you do something good, uh, we also need to talk about you. And, you know, this has been a rough time. It has been a rough time and, and, uh, it's not easy making certain decisions. The harder the decision, the more difficult. But, I think that o- over these la- last year, last two years, um, our CEO has really stepped up to the plate. And she smiled when she should be frowning. You know, she's, she's accepted complaints and all of that, but yes, she steadied the ship. And so, you know, our, our, our chair today made this statement from our financial report, you know, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, down from seven million, seven million, wherever it is gonna end. But, the work through the crises, one of the great, greatest things is for us to, you know, for persons to be able to not get excited about the storm, but recognize what happens after the storm. And so, you know, to Dana and to everybody that's board and everybody she's worked with and the people that are here or not here, um, you know, uh, thank you for supporting. And, uh, I, I just think that what we've done today has been, uh, apropos, apropos. So, I'd like to make that statement, uh, and, uh, so, thank you very much. And that's all I've got. White Castle's after the meeting.
Thank you, Pastor Jones. Uh, Mr. Young?
You guys switch seats. I can't keep following them on these. Um, so, Christina, thanks for pointing out, we gotta change that slide, um, because it's, operating loss is one point eight-six million. Thank God for good investments. I don't know who does their investments, but that helped. And also, leasing income, which gets it down to the, basically, one eighty-five. So, the one eighty-five is correct. The way that slide lays out historically shows total numbers as opposed to bringing, it was either that or we have to bring in the investment income. So, we did well on investments. So, I guess from a provider's standpoint, we put out almost two million more than we took in. While it's better than we were, two million per month that's going out to the providers is, um, not sustainable. So, we'll see with, with what the state does with the contracts. Um, appreciate the, the work that went into prepping, um, because it's, it's necessary. I mean, as you guys can see, this, this is intense and staffing is gonna be, I know in the access center, like, that's why I asked the question, we're gonna have- access center, like, that's why I asked the question, we're going to have some challenging times. We're doing well, Pastor Jones, I agree, but, you know, right now, folks in Lansing aren't paying us to do well. They're still a little bit behind. So 2 million operating loss, we made it up by renting and investing, so 185 total loss. All right, thank you.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes, I did want to make a comment about the CEO evaluation because we didn't have that much of a discussion until now. But I have felt I had all the information available to make a good decision, and a good decision was made, and I support it. We are in remarkable and uncharted territory in the past year, and I think Dana has, her leadership has been exceptional, supported by so many who are here tonight, and down to all 250 employees. So she shares the positives with what she has, what has been accomplished by the organization. And I look at a couple things this year. We were all concerned a little bit about the transportation change, and that went very well. I was very surprised because I thought there's always going to be glitches, and we're going to hear about them. And we did hear about a couple instances, but quite frankly, I would have to say they were isolated, they were not systemic. The second thing is, for a couple years, we've talked about fee for services being put into effect, and I don't think I or anybody on this board realized the gargantuan task that we put on the organization to come up with what would be the fee that would be charged for a service. It's quite, when I, was fully described to me, it's quite an overwhelming task, but everybody was up to it. It took upwards of a year just to get that done. It's not something that can be done with a snap of a finger because you want to make sure it's fair and it's appropriate, and that was done. So I think those are two major accomplishments that occurred in this past year. So I think the financial performance is, in addition, so far above where we were last year. And again, I want to reiterate, the money that went out the door the past three years in the tens of millions of dollars from our savings account went for services, and even that needs to be applauded. It's not how we wanted to do it, but that's what we ended up doing. But now we recognize it, as our finance chairman has said, that it's not a sustainable model. And so as a result, like everybody else, we have to stretch the family dollar as far as we can to provide as many services to as many people that need them in our community. So that's what we're doing. And the leadership on that falls on Dana's shoulders, and I believe that this performance this past year merits the increases that we gave. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cowan. I'd like to thank all of the various departments for the hard work that they have done and those who presented on tonight. And it was great to hear that the suicide rate for Oakland County, even though the fiscal year is not done, it looks as though there's a decrease from funding year '24 to '25. And I think that's great news, and I'm sure a lot of that may have to do with 988 being that you can text to that line. You don't have to make that phone call. So keep doing what you're doing and keep your eye on the prize of servicing the people that we are here to service. If nothing further, we stand adjourned.